All right, we have a little bit of a change here. Steve Powell, we're going to be welcoming Steve from --
Scott.
It's Scott?
Yes. So Mayor, if I may, I'd like to do a brief introduction for this economic development workshop.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Okay, it is Scott. So, over the last few months, there's been a lot of discussion at the council level related to economic development. In July, Barry Broome, the president and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, provided a presentation on the return on investment in Yuba City's membership with GSEC. Then also in July, Brenda Stranix with the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation came forward to present the Conference of Economic Development Strategy. There were further discussions related to economic development and the city's membership in GSEC in August and September. And it was at the August meeting that council requested that we coordinate an economic development workshop with the EDC and GSEC. And they were gracious enough to agree to come tonight to do that. And so I'd like to introduce Scott Powell, who's the Senior Vice President for GSEC, who will provide an overview of core functions, the role and services provided by GSEC. Also, I'd like to note that Danielle Casey, who has a little bit longer with GSEC, she'll be moving on, but she's here virtually with us. And then after Scott is done, Brenda will go up there and also provide a similar overview for the EDC. And Judy, if I may, could you please bring up the presentation for GSEC? And I'd like to introduce Scott Powell.
Welcome, Scott.
Forgot to hit the red button. Thank you, everybody. And to add further confusion, my first name is Michael, but I've got my Scott my entire life, so. But Scott, Steve, Michael, I'll respond to any of them. But, you know, so Mayor Harris, thank you, members of the council, thank you very much for having Greater Sacramento Economic Council back out today. It's a pleasure to chat with you again. And Diana, thank you for all your support and Brenda as well, preparing for this evening. So I'm going to take you through a bunch of slides. If you have any questions, I'm assuming the protocol is just to ask. But kind of an overview and agenda, but Diane has covered that. So my name, Michael Scott Powell, I am the Senior Vice President of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. So I lead our business development, our research teams, and as of next week, our marketing teams as well. I've done economic development for 15 years across the country. Majority of that time has actually been working at the city level. So very familiar with what economic development looks like at the local level, the regional level, and worked for the District of Columbia, which is kind of a weird amalgamation of city, county, and state all rolled into one. So I've done economic development all over the place and have a pretty good handle on it. Been in the region for about a year, and most before that, I was back in Wisconsin. So one thing I wanted to bring your attention to, and we did share this with Diane, is the National League of Cities put together a great document, something both my colleague Danielle Casey and I have shared with multiple elected officials, is this document is put together, like I said, by NLC along with IEDC, of outlining some of the kind of core functions of an elected official's role with an economic development. And you'll see multiple functions there on the slide. And as you're looking at it, you're thinking, the community college does some of that, our public works does some of that, community development does some of that. The Greater Sacramento Economic Council really focuses on that regional level, on the marketing and attraction, and then supporting some of the things like economic resiliency, strategic planning. And then we're rolling out business retention and expansion, which is visitation as well, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. When Brenda speaks to you, you'll see some of the other areas in which she functions. But the key is to look at that is, it is a team sport. Everybody has a different role to make economic development function. It's not one group's responsibility, and pending on the different level or responsibility is how and which they all interface and work. So that'll be some of what we'll be talking about today. And if you decide to dwell into the 20 pages, it really is an easy read, of some of the things elected officials specifically, of what they can do to be a better champion of economic development. So I think nothing really shows how interconnected economies are than by looking at the workforce. I believe Barry presented this slide to you, so I'm not going to belabor the workforce part of the slide, but it's a great analogy of, you know, economies don't stop at municipal borders. They are interconnected among, from the local community, to the county, to the region, to the state, and then to the, you know, to the federal government as a whole. So we are still constrained by, you know, the nature in which the country we live in and the fact that we're in the state of California, but there is still a great level of interconnectivity among the region. So one example, we recently visiting with a community or a company down in Lincoln, you know, in Placer County, and checking some of their challenges, it was going well, it was not, and they never brought up workforce. So we asked them about it, and they said, we don't have any trouble recruiting workforce. But they said they get 20 to 30% of the workforce comes down from in and around the Yuba City area. So as those workers come down to Lincoln, they earn their paycheck, but when they return back to Yuba City, that paycheck comes with them and gets spent and circulated in the local economy. So a great example of how a regional economy works is that workforce interconnecting throughout the region. So as a company comes in, its workforce isn't located right next to them. It's shared throughout the region, and sometimes even a greater part as all. But again, if you can imagine that, if people, you know, somebody that works, doesn't work in the community, works somewhere else, it's a great example of how those dollars and the economies interact with each other and contribute to an overall regional vitality. So some of the core functions that the Greater Sacramento Economic Council provides is lead generation and, you know, project response of, when a lead comes in, it usually comes in either at the state level or the regional level. Once they discernment on a region, then they'll get down into the local level. So we, part of the work we do is we spend a lot of time developing lead sourcing in them, bringing them in to the area, outlining that value proposition, and, you know, providing that, you know, to the company, so they can make an educated and informed decision, and, you know, working with our community so they can put their best face forward once they hone in on the, you know, on the region. Also have a very engaged PR and marketing team. We spend a lot of time marketing and branding, you know, the region as well. We do all of that through the research. It's all data and evidence-based. It is, you know, when you're talking about companies making decisions, it is based upon data and evidence. What does the workforce look like, the tax structure, you know, the commute patterns, et cetera, whatever could impact, you know, the company in a positive or negative way. So again, we look at this at that regional level. GoBiz is a state representative that represents California as a whole. So when that comes in from GoBiz, they aggregate the entire state into one concise document. We do that for the region. So some of those, you know, kind of drilling down a little bit more in some of those roles we play in, so I kind of talked about that attraction, you know, response and coming up with new opportunities, we just rolled out a business retention and expansion program. We're just kicking it off now. And looking of visiting targeted tradable industry sectors, so companies that bring in wealth from outside the region in that grow the local economy and the regional economy as well. Talent is a major driver, I'm sure, from talking with businesses. Talented and educated workforce is what drives their location decision. So we're putting together right now a regional talent attraction program that we're finalizing now and hoping to roll out here in the next few weeks or months. Regional councils, we have a Food and Ag Council, a Fintech Council, a Life Science Industry Consortium. All those go to better inform our data and understanding of each of those, so we can make a better value proposition for the region. And again, all of that is synthesized based upon the evidence from, you know, from all that, so we can put together a, you know, a better informed value proposition. So some of the tools and resources that the Greater Sacramento Economic Council provides that you might or might not be aware of, and you can see all those, and, you know, this is with you, so if you want to refer back to them, but I'm going to highlight a few because nothing's worse than some dude standing up here reading you a slide. You know, so SizeUp is a great small business tool, greater sacramento.com/sizeup, provides, you know, market information, you know, where a market gap would be. So if somebody was looking at starting a coffee shop in Yuba City, it would provide them, what is the demand? How much would, how much revenue could they make based upon industry trends and projections? So if a small business is looking at adding a line of service or starting, it's a great tool to see, is there a market for my product or service? Is available again on the Greater Sacramento website. A landing page, each of the 20 member communities from the Greater Sacramento region has a landing page. So as we market the Greater Sacramento region, is information about Yuba City on there that people get to see. Our sites database, so major, major commercial real estate sites throughout the region are on a queryable and searchable database. We have a staff member that updates that and works with our seven MOU partners in the brokerage community to make sure that's up to date. So when somebody's querying locations or site in the Greater Sacramento region, it's one more place where they can get more information on it. A job board, so businesses in the area have another avenue to post and reach a wider audience, more than just Indeed or, you know, the local area. We're pushing our marketing message out nationally, and they're getting that exposure as well. We have a dedicated PR team. They actually had Barry being interviewed with Bloomberg today. So, but they can also do is amplify the message that the community is putting out into our network as well to, you know, help get a better and more cohesive message for the region. And on top of that as well is we have extensive database sets. So oversee our research team. We spend a significant portion of our budget on research tools and actually have the staff behind it. So as you are starting to, whether you're doing land use planning or strategic planning sessions, your finance department's putting together their CAFR, we have resources that can help them provide strategic information that they might need for these documents. That is nothing more than a phone call away. So you can call myself, or Steve Powell, or Michael Powell, and we'll get you to the right person to get the information that you need. So, and then some of the areas in which to better leverage our relationships. So again, as we're submitting those responses, you know, responses as we get in requests, we submit out, we submit out what we call an E-Track or an RFI to all of our communities. What we're looking for is a letter of support and an available site of what makes your community special. We aggregate that, put in that regional spin, and, you know, put together a very consolidated package of information. We meet twice a month. So, you know, once 30 minutes, that was last week, next week you got 90 minutes. So you get our business development update and, you know, a few other, you know, key pieces of information, so you're aware of what's going on in the region and some of our efforts that we're doing. Our cooperation policy is nothing more than how and which we interact. And then we talked about those business retention efforts. So again, that's something we want to coordinate with the community. We've identified seven companies. Maybe there's more, maybe those are the wrong seven. That's a dialogue we want to have as we sit down and figure out, what can we do to help those businesses grow and succeed in the Yuba City area? So I'm going to close before I turn it over to Brenda, and I think I've done a pretty good job of keeping it 15 to 20-ish minutes. I had a mayor always tell me, and he attributed to Senator Mike Lee, although I did not fact check that, so he could have been just making it up, but he always said, what we do, we do together. And again, it was, being economic development is a team sport of, we were always working, when I was working for a city, with our chamber, our community college, our regional partners, to put together the best face forward, and knowing that whenever a company lands in the region, we all benefit from the economic multiplier effect, and we grow stronger as a region. If one community suffers, then we all suffer. If we're not functioning well as a region, then there's no hope of one community being able to pull themselves out by themselves. So we need to all be successful together. We all need to work together, and, you know, and we look to you in that partnership to figure out how we can work together to grow that economy. So with that, you know, Mr. Mayor and Diane, that is my presentation for you for this evening. So I believe, are we holding questions to the end?
No, council's welcome to ask any questions now.
Members of council, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you for the presentation. I really enjoyed the graphics and design of it, very nicely done. Can you go back to maybe a few slides? I have a question.
I hope I can. Tell me when to stop.
Keep going. Keep going. One more. Actually, forward, I'm sorry. One more. One more. Right there.
All right.
So.
Perfect.
One more. Backward, yeah, forward. Thank you. So I'm curious to know more about number four, regional talent and workforce efforts. Can you describe that a little bit more for me? Because as a council member, I get asked that a lot about the needs in our community.
So our focus, you know, our focus again is providing that regional value proposition of why somebody of traditional regional economic development was, we're going to get companies move into the region, recognizing that it's more of a competition now for workforce. So how do we start, how do we start positioning the region to sell it to not only a company, but also to an individual? What is it going to look like for their workforce to relocate to the area? How do we encourage people by selling the amenities of the region to get them interested in wanting to move or relocate from wherever they are into the Greater Sacramento area? So we are building a talent-focused website, creating a job portal, and really targeting that message towards the individual rather than towards the company.
And my other question was, on the committees that you mentioned, there's multiple committees that you have. So beyond our mayor representing or our city staff, who else from locally is on any of those committees from Yuba Sutter area?
So the Fintech Consortium and Life Science, when we're both started during the pandemic. So, and that's where we've looked to those, our regional partners, to help identify companies that want to participate. So I know for Food and Ag, we've reached out several times to a few local, you know, food companies to try to get them to engage, and haven't been successful. So if you've got some references, we would love to get them engaged. And because it's really an industry consortium to get that, you know, that input and feedback and have the ability for them to network with companies throughout the region.
Right. In particular, because of our ag industry being such a large revenue in this community and in that there's such a shortage of talent workforce. And so I find that it is important to have committee representatives beyond city council or mayor being at that table. It has to be some local business owners or trades or, you know, school, nonprofits to help understand what are those needs in our area for the growth of economics. So I would really ask that as we move forward, I would be more than happy to try to connect with folks, but when people are in private business, they really want to be able to know that their time is going to be used with some, you know, meaning to that time. People are really busy, so they want to know, if I'm contributing to this time, what am I going to get in the contribution? Will they have to pay for membership, or would they come under our membership?
So those consortium, there is no fee to join. We do ask, to your point, that they are, you know, members of a business for the reasons you just mentioned, and they meet three to four times a year. So for an hour, 90 minutes at the most. So an opportunity during normal times to network. Now it's a little bit more of how do we share information, being it's a, you know, we've all been on enough Zoom calls to know it's, two people can't talk. So to provide that, what's going on in that region. And so our Food and Ag is actually chaired by Mike Teal of Rayleigh's, and this is a personal passion of his. And so it is very much industry-driven, but so if you have somebody, we would love to hear it. If you have companies that want to post jobs on our job board, we are just launching it now. You know, I think it's been live for a week, and we have not even promoted it yet. So those are two great opportunities that we would love, you know, love feedback and guidance from local businesses.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I love the fact that Rayleigh's is involved, and you have, they're more of a grocery consumer buyer's farming industry, and that is very different than a grocery industry aspect of, you know, they're buying the products, not necessarily growing it or dealing with the water issues or other issues that local businesses in those particular businesses are having to deal with every day. So, okay, thank you for those answers.
Thank you for the question, Pam.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. I've been one that's been very thirsty for knowledge on economic development, and I do understand regionalism. I operate a company that's in at least nine Northern California counties, so I understand the value of that. But I guess my question, and I'm not trying to shoot the messenger, is what have you done for me lately here in Yuba City as far as retention and/or recruitment?
Yeah. So the retention program of rolling that out regionally is something that we recognized was a missing piece of, you know, among the economic development community of having one, you know, one in place. So both myself and Danielle Casey, coming from other communities, of recognizing that it was a core piece, but wasn't really being executed in the area, floated it among the Economic Development Director team. And one thing I'll note is, even though that's what we call it, there are several people there that aren't economic developers. There are many communities within the Greater Sacramento region that don't have an economic development partner. They have a city manager, a finance director, somebody from the planning department staffing them there. So want to make that distinction as well that I neglected to bring into the presentation. So as we're standing that up, that gives us a great level of business intelligence of what's going on regionally and what can we start doing, whether it's policy advocacy or working with workforce partners, or some other solution that we can actually put that data and evidence through those multiple interviews. So that's what's coming on the retention side. Again, a strong functioning, you know, regional economy is what's in it for you. If, you know, again, if the jobs aren't, going back to the example of a company in Lincoln, if that company isn't growing or expanding and people are working there, and that money coming back to the economy, it, you know, it harms the overall regional economy. So while you can look at, I'm looking for, hey, here are the, you know, the companies we brought to the area, recognizing that companies that come into the region benefit the workforce in the area, that workforce brings back, you know, income spending, the suppliers in the area are, you know, supplying those companies as well. So it grows the overall economy. Absent that, what's in it for you is if none of that does happen, the economy isn't as vibrant as it is. And again, we're constantly focusing on, how do we become more competitive? This region is still very focused on, you know, government. It needs greater levels of diversification. So how do we grow those tradable sectors, and how do we diversify that economy so it continues to grow? In 2001, the Greater Sacramento region was one of the fastest economies to recover after the recession. In 2008, we were one of the slowest. And that is true of almost every, you know, community. And actually looking at Yuba City, of Yuba City and the Yuba Sutter area was even slower to recover than, you know, as the two counties in the city. So by creating that regional diverse economy ensures that through this recession and future ones, that they'll be more resilient to come out of them, but will also enjoy a greater economy when the economy's going well.
A follow-up question, and I don't want to get into partisanship, but I think it's been well documented that California is not a friendly place to do business. What's GSEC's strategy to combat that in the region?
Well, first I didn't notice, but, so, and it's, and one of those too is, you know, is working with our partners. So when we address policy issues, we had a very in-depth conversation with the Bay Area Council and the East Bay Partnership, and some of those other regional economic development and business groups of what can we do to, you know, better position California? Not so much position, but what are those things that are impeding the ability in which to grow businesses and succeed? We interviewed, you know, about 10, 12 site selectors across the nation right before the pandemic, and their feedback to us is California's reputation is getting worse, is, it's, and it's not just anecdotal of between regulation and, it wasn't even taxes, it was regulation, and furthermore, the unpredictability of there's always something new coming down the pike that they can't prepare for. I've talked to several business people throughout the country. Most of them will tell me if, if I've got to pay a little bit more tax, I'm not happy about it, but I can live with it, but I need to know the working environment. And if I don't know that, I can't plan. When I was in Michigan, they repealed the business tax with no plan to replace it. So I had businesses tell me, they're like, I can't forecast my revenue because I have no idea what my tax liability is going to be in three years, because the legislature repealed it in one session and passed it. So, so what are we doing to address that? Is we are working with the economic development community across the state through the Real Coalition and others to put forth practical recommendations to allow us to better compete? Because let's be clear, the solution to this recession for probably 20 other states are California-based companies. And if we aren't deliberate in protecting those resources, we as California taxpayers, you know, invested in the infrastructure, whether it's the universities or other research institutions that allowed them to grow and flourish, and they're moving that, you know, that knowledge and capital out. So it is something that, if Barry was here, if you think this is long-winded, you'd get at least 10 more minutes of why we need as a state to be coming up with a competitive program, of what are the programs that we need to be doing and things we need to fix to better position to, you know, grow California? Because California is one of the few states that hasn't put out a recovery plan as of yet, unless it, unless I missed it, I haven't seen it yet. And that puts us at a significant competitive disadvantage, both for the businesses in the community and for those that, looking for that opportunity to grow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Again, thanks for all three of you being here tonight. I really appreciate it and giving me a presentation. That would be, what was that, Scott, Steve, and Michael?
Exactly.
You know, echoing the vice mayor's sentiments, I mean, the biggest problem that we have in California statewide is bureaucracy and regulations. It's not business-friendly. And I'm looking at a golden opportunity that's right here in front of us, and I want to understand how this translates from GSEC, EDC, to the city of Yuba City to help us grow. Our two strongest assets we have here, it's been documented time and time again, is ag industry and healthcare. That's our greatest assets right here in Yuba City and Center County. And we take that, and with the pandemic that's been going on, you see a lot of people that are leaving the metropolitan areas and moving to the rural areas because they found out that they can work from anywhere. So one of your points you mentioned was lead generation. How does a lead generation from GSEC translate into us getting a new business partner in our community? Because our community, while we need to preserve the ag land around us, we have a lot of area within our city limits that can be developed. We have a great opportunity, especially in the ag industry, for industrial side, for R&amp;D, for, you know, development of tractor implements, things of that nature, seed development, healthcare, you could do the same type of thing with R&amp;D. How do you, when you're putting together something at GSEC, get those lead generations and sell us as Yuba City versus a Lincoln or a West SAC or a Sacramento to get people to want to come and talk to us? Because it's one thing to get a lead generation, but we got to have the follow-through. So that's kind of my first avenue going down. How does that lead generation get to a new business here?
So that's, you know, you know, Mr. Shaw, that's a great question. And part of that is, is that, that local level. So of having that, as we bring them in, you know, I used to, when I worked for a city, I used to love to remind my regional partner was, it's like, you know, I'm the fullback taking it in that last yard. It was the regional partner to get it, you know, get it into the red zone, it was the local one to kind of finish it off. So the regional was still there to provide me data, evidence, you know, information, but it was me at the local level to help them go through the, you know, the entitlement process, to prove that they could meet their timelines, to prove that the infrastructure was in place, to prove that any other, you know, local challenges could be addressed, and they wouldn't be a challenge, but there'd be opportunity, and that, you know, that company would be successful in the region. So when we put out those RFI's, we look for our communities to respond back and say, here's what makes our community special and why this opportunity is right for our community. So we can highlight that in our engagement, because when we talk with them, we like to say, here's what these three or four communities will do for you as an opportunity. So absent that, we still sell the region and, you know, look at what's best and how we can find the right spot for them. But needing that feedback from you is that team of, we do part of it, but we also need you at that table for that back and forth to help us identify that last mile opportunity of what are some of those things of servicing 20 communities? We try really hard to know everything we can about each community, but as you can imagine, you know, there's a lot of things you miss as, you know. So that's where we need that partnership and need that kind of point of contact to be that resource for us to call up and say, Scott, this is an amazing opportunity, and this is why Yuba City is the perfect spot for this company.
So hearing you say that, that leads me to believe we've kind of been missing that as a city for quite some time, that you have the ability to have lead generation, but there's an element that we've been missing here. This isn't something new, because we haven't seen that growth over the past, you know, eight to 10 years. We're needing that point person, as you said, in-house, correct?
That is correct.
And we currently, and we currently do not have, nor have we had, that in-house person. We've kind of been filling the void the best we can, but that's, you're telling me that's what's going to make the best difference?
And somebody that is focused on and looking at, you know, at a local level, there are different challenges of, does a site have infrastructure? different challenges of, does the site have infrastructure or is the planning right? Stuff along those lines are really great ways that local, that local person or the community, and again, it's a, a community decision of how and which you want to engage. But absolutely, you need that, you know, you need that person that's going to best position your assets in region, you know, your assets to grow the local economy. So, and that's really where that local piece comes in.
Okay. And, and this is, not meaning to be any way combative, I'm trying to understand this whole thing because I want economic development to work in our community because it has been lacking for some time and we really want to see us flourish here. But you talk about the Yuba City landing page. So obviously if you have a lead generation, they're looking at things. Where's all the information that you're just talking about that you need that other input coming from? Have you been getting that from our city to help understand our economy, to understand the infrastructure we have so that when they look at, you know, what we have to offer, they're looking at a true picture? Or is, is that another element that's missing as well that we would need this person to fill in and, and be that bridge?
That would be, it's, so we, you know, in normal times, we came out and toured the community. It was, you know, I want to say October, November is what sounds about right. So we brought out probably about nine of our staff and spent about three hours touring the community to get a better understanding of, you know, of Yuba City. And we try to do that twice a year, whether it's myself, Barry and members of the team, you know, so we understand of, again, trying to understand each member of that, the community. But when it becomes down to a specific site that we're submitting this RFI, you know, we're looking for feedback or input from the community, you know, with a seven-day turnaround, that's when we look to our local partners to provide that, those last pieces of information. So that landing page was information either we put up and sent over to the community to say, is this accurate and correct? What else needs to be added? And if we don't hear anything, we make our best guess. So, and again, it's part of that partnership as well of, we need that individual that has that understanding. And again, it doesn't have to be a dedicated full-time person, but somebody that has that dialogue, that's advocating for the community and helping, helping us understand along with our 19 other partners as well.
Okay. And, and I really appreciate that. I get the regionalism, I mean, I live in Yuba City, I go to church in Roseville. And so I have a lot of friends down there and such as well, and I see what their community's doing. I'm just wanting this partnership to work and I understand GSEC's got a role, EDC has a role, and we have a role as a city, and we've got to get all three of these plugged in together. Because what's going to attract businesses here isn't just going to be the data, but it's going to be the relationships. And you're going to open the door with some of those that we don't have access to. And we need to make sure that we have all the key components from EDC to the city that can step through that door and bring them to our community if they're a perfect fit. That's really, I think, what all five of us up here are seeking is the understanding of how we get them here.
Mr. Shaw, I couldn't have said it better myself. So, thank you.
I think that's another task for the lead person to, to coordinate that, put together some policy. And my question's initially been answered. The one thing I have remaining, Steve, Scott, Mike, is have you, have you seen any opportunities through GSEC or otherwise for the, what we are anticipating to be a resurgence in telecommuting?
We've, you know, anecdotally, we're seeing a lot of that evidence now. The in-migration from the Bay Area, Redfin just, you know, tracks real estate data and has the Greater Sacramento region as the number one in migration. LinkedIn has us number three. So it's really tough to get good data during the pandemic, but I'm not going to question Redfin or LinkedIn. I think those are great, great examples of people coming from outside this region of choosing to be here when they can choose to be anywhere. And we don't know what's going to fully happen, especially in the office environment. I can read one report that people are going to be working from home forever, and I'll read another that says people can't wait to get back into the office. I think the truth is, we don't know and it's probably some combination of them, but I, I think we all know there's going to be some level of tele, teleworking for those in office environments where that type of work, you know, is suitable and reasonable. And we fully expect that and that is part of, part of our, you know, value proposition and talent attraction efforts of, you've got a lot of opportunity to live a great lifestyle and if you still have to be in the bay for one or two days a week or a month, it's a 90-minute, two-hour drive or a train ride. So why not leverage a much greater quality of life and sell that proximity to your, you know, your tech employer or whatever player it is?
Exactly what I was thinking. So that's good. Thank you for that. And forgive me, man, did you have some?
So I'm going to follow the other councils' lead. Thank you, Steve, Michael and Scott, for the presentation and everything that you folks do. I just got one quick question. So you folks came here, did a tour of the community, got your thoughts and stuff and then sent it to the city with what you think our city is and what you would like to show throughout the region. Did we answer you? Did we say it was good? Did we, main thing, did we answer you?
I'll be honest, you know, Mr. Cardoza, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I know there were several that we did on the fly to make sure we had something and it's, it's a living document. We can update those 14 times a month. Our marketing team won't be happy, but we'll be happy to update it 14 times a month if that's what's necessary. So, you know, it's, you know, like I said, very easy for us to do, very easy to, of all those resources we offer, we put them there to support our communities and to grow the economy. We don't do it for our own adulation and we think they're great resources. So, you know, and we look forward, I mean, running the research department of, I would say there's probably seven or eight communities, you know, that, you know, that probably have a research request in once a month and there's another 10 to 12, we rarely get one. I'll be honest, I think I've done at least two for you this year, Brenda, in the past two or three months. So, yeah. So done, you know, I'm trying to remember, but we've had quite a few and we're hap, we're excited to do them. Those are the fun ones. You know, pulling, you know, pulling another piece of data for Barry, we're happy to say, sorry Barry, I've got Yuba City asking for something. We'll get to you tomorrow.
All right. Well, thank you, Scott, for everything that you and GSEC does and looking forward to working with you and GSEC in the real near future.
So, thank you.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Mayor, members of council, again, thank you very much for the opportunity and the partnership and the continued partnership. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it too.
Thank you.